Good heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, the city in which we live. Guide us this afternoon as we make our decisions. Christ's name.
Amen.
Amen. This is the April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of the Newton City Council. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of March the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Before y'all entertain a motion, we adopt the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the minutes as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. We have several appointments today, boards and commissions. The first, Mr. Schell, bicentennial committee?
Yes, Betsy Burnett, I'd like to nominate her.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. We place Betsy Burnett on the bicentennial committee. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Did you have another? Or have you already made one?
I've already made one.
Okay, you're good. Okay, and then Ms. Jenkins, she has one left. Put it on the next agenda. Mr. Carricko is not here, so if you put his on. Mr. Guion?
Next agenda, please.
All right, thank you. And then, Mr. Guion, you're still up with Christmas Commission?
Yes, yes. Ms. Nancy Taylor, please. Or Teller, excuse me.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Nancy Teller to the Christmas Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Ms. Jenkins on the next.
Yes, next agenda.
Next agenda. All right, thank you. I will put place into nomination Cassie Hooks to be reappointed to Newnan.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Carricko is the next. Mr. Schell?
Next meeting.
Next. And Mr. Guion, Parks Commission?
Uh, next.
Thank you. And Mr. Guion?
Next.
Thank you. And then, there's one that is outstanding, that's not on our list today, but it's Keep Newton Beautiful, and Mr. Schell has that.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Trent Fenderginn.
Second. Motion is second. Say that name again?
Trent Fenderginn.
Trent Fenderginn, to the Keep Newton Beautiful Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Phillips, do you have anything today?
No, sir.
I don't have anything today. Under new business, the first item is a public hearing. This is an application for alcohol beverage license for retail on-premise pouring sales of distilled spirits, mock beverages and wine, Seven Spring Street. The reason for this is a new business. This is a public hearing that I've opened at this time. And ask if there's anyone who would like to come forward to speak to this issue of alcohol license. That's Spring, Seven Spring Street. Seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time. Everything's in order. I'll ask for a motion on the application.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the application as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. You're representing Seven Spring Street?
I am.
We appreciate you being here today. When were you open?
I don't know the answer to that yet.
Okay, all right, well.
Hopefully in the next two months.
All right, well, great. We're glad to have you back downtown.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Have a good one.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda today is another public hearing. This is application for alcohol beverage license, York Restaurant Group. This is at one 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 Highway thirty-four East. The reason for this is the addition of distilled spirits. And this is public hearing on this item that I've opened at this time. Does anyone here would like to come forward to speak to the issue? I ask if someone is in attendance representing this group today. If you're here, sir, thank you. Appreciate you being here. I'll close the public hearing at this time. Is everything in order? I'll ask for a motion on the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the ordinance as, or the application as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for being here today, sir. The next, a consideration of the extension for distilled spirits, package store license. This is for four fifty-nine Millard Farmer Industrials. Is someone here today representing? If you'll come forward and state your reason for an extension here, thank you.
Name is Manny Singh. We just had our final inspection today. We just have a minor issue with the landscape item and some dirt issues. Now, we still have to put some hay on it, and that's about it, basically. So, based on the licensing and all that, I'm probably gonna need another two months because it's gonna take city license and then state license and then a couple of weeks for the inventory to be tagged and stuff like that. Yeah.
Right. Appreciate that. Ms. Phillips, does that agree with your perspective on that? Okay, so somebody give me a sixty-day, what are we looking at?
Make a motion, we extend it to sixty days.
Sir.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. Thank you for being here, and we appreciate your opening in Newton.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, the next item today, Mr. Ramirez has Five Hamilton Drive. This is a request for a public hearing. How are you, sir?
Good. How are you doing?
Good.
Yes, the building department found unsafe structure on Five Hamilton, Boham and Drive, and we are requesting a public hearing for May twenty-eighth.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we're setting a public hearing date for, as requested by staff, for Five Hamilton, Boham and Drive. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. The next is for information only. This is a consideration of the addition of a proposed area to the urban redevelopment area. Mr. Moody, how are you today?
I'm doing great, Mr. Mayor and Council. This, before you, we're just providing information to let you know that we intend to bring a public hearing on April twenty-third for the evening meeting for the council to consider adding additional areas to the urban redevelopment boundary. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Other than that, that's.
Any questions, Mr. Moody, about the process we're going through here?
No questions about the process. I was just kinda, clearly you have an idea of what you wanted to add. So I kept looking at the agenda thinking I was missing an insert with where you were looking to do it.
Correct. We do have, we do have a map prepared that is not included with this for information only packet, but it will be included with the public hearing packet. But it does add portions in the Westgate neighborhood on the other side of Belk Road because right now we only have what's on the east side of Belk. Adds Spence Avenue Sewell over where the Housing Authority is. And then it also adds Spence Street, Jefferson, Farmer Street, and everything up on the, up by Jefferson Parkway, or off of Bull'sboro.
Mr. Phillips, if we, if you've already completed that map then?
Yes.
If you could go ahead and send it out in advance of the agenda so we could be taking a look at that, that'd be great. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Comments?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is a consideration of modification of the composition of parks, trees, and cultural arts commissions. This is something y'all know we put on the agenda at our retreat, or came up on the agenda at our retreat, and it's back in front of us. There's no, there's nothing in the agenda today to take action on that I'm aware of. Mr. Craver, do you have this? If you'd like to come in?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, as the mayor just stated, you know, as a result of your February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four retreat, staff has prepared kind of a concise version of what we believe was achieved consensus at that meeting to take from fourteen members in the Cultural Arts Commission to seven members as a result of the amount of work done in the past as opposed to the number of staff available now to do that work. And so that's one. We'll set that aside. And then the other was the consideration to combine the parks and tree commissions. Both have seven members now with similar, yet distinct, different duties and responsibilities, and we can talk to that as much as you'd like to. In your packet, the ordinances that created each one of those commissions does exist. However, the action item is at the council's pleasure to instruct the city attorney to come back at our next meeting with an ordinance. So that's the legal side. Then the procedure side of how does this take place? That's contemplated in the item, in this discussion item as well, is going from fourteen to seven or combining the two sevens to a fourteen that may go down to a seven. I've explained a couple alternatives I believe may exist. Some are by attrition, which we discussed at the retreat whereby you just allow those members whose terms expire to, at that point, just that term, that position expires, I guess, for lack of a better phrase. Or the alternative is we start fresh, where we just have seven new members, and those seven members are appointed by this body at that meeting. Either way, it's at the pleasure of the council, but we're responding, again, to your action at the retreat, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Comments from council? Looks fine to me.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're clear on your explanation, as clear as, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah, we got two people going.
Go ahead.
I jumped in. My bad. Go ahead.
All right. Do we want to talk about what would actually change? Because you mentioned some things that might change that we have, they have certain authorities now, and whether we want to keep them that way or how, do we want to discuss that thoroughly before we make that move?
Yeah, I think we should. I think we ought to really slow walk this because it's, there are certain things that, like the tree commission is the arbitration board now, even though they've not heard
Correct.
an arbitration. They, they are set up to hear an arbitration from a developer if, if in fact, they've, they've got an issue.
Correct.
And it takes the, it takes that final judgment out of a staff member's hands and turns it into a, much like the BZA
Similar.
does for their particular items. The tree commission is doing that now. It's charged to do that now. So, you know, I don't know that a combination of the tree and the park commission needs to sit and hear that. I don't know how long it takes for attrition to take place in those two groups. And what if the attrition was all the tree commission people and the parks commission people, but you would combine them? I, I need to see, this needs, in my opinion, it needs to, we walk through very slowly, those two. Now, the cultural arts commission is a different animal to me. It's already at fourteen. The workload is not there, I don't think, to handle fourteen. If we wanted to do something there, it's, it needs to move not quickly, but not as slow as, slowly as the other two. That's, that's my thing. Now, everybody else?
Are you proposing a work session related to that? Is that what you're, or rather than discuss it openly now, or open in a work session?
Well, it doesn't really matter if we, I mean, if we want to do it in a work session, we can. We've got a work session next month, was it next month, for the Jackson, Jefferson, Clark?
Yes, we're gonna be having a work session to hear the traffic engineers come here to come back and represent and have more time for Q and A, show the modeling, talk about the additional potential other study areas. So we are gonna have a work session following the May the fourteenth council meeting.
That's a perfect time to do that, to me.
Yeah, and just add it on to that work session.
Well, what would you, just for staff?
Add this on to that work session.
For staff's clarity, what else would you like to see for discussion purposes?
Well.
You talking about, you talking about the parks and the, you talking about that committee combining?
Right.
I can quickly, councilwoman, if you'd like, you know, kind of in a conversational way, the main differences between the parks and tree, besides what the mayor just outlined, when in two thousand and twenty-two, they were given those additional duties to serve as an alternative compliance panel in the case that a developer could not meet our tree preservation ordinance. They could hear that and propose, and that group could then work to find the middle, right? So that's in addition. But the main difference between the parks and trees, parks will look more often at physical improvements. Playground equipment, rock walls where trees are planted, shrubbery typically in parks, and other public rights of way. So that's the main, where one's looking at more soft scape improvements, trees. Parks commission looks more at hardscape improvements. It's the main difference between the two.
Are there any designations that we carry? I know we were a tree city for a while, and so there are requirements that have to.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
That you have some sort of, that there is a board.
There are requirements, and we are still a tree city, and we've been that for thirty-plus years.
Right.
And would not want.
Right.
I don't think this would jeopardize that.
I appreciate it.
So, but that's the main difference. The alternative compliance, but, and then hardscape improvements, soft scape improvements.
Okay. And I think that, just in my opinion, if we're looking at it, I don't know about y'all, but I haven't talked to my people yet to see if they're even interested on being on a combined committee just yet. They may find that you have one person that says, yeah, I'll do it, and the other one's like, eh. So, I don't know yet.
Yeah, one alternative may be to combine them and leave them as fourteen with the duties, and we assess that over time and see what that looks like. You have parks and trees you're adding, but you have, so, so you don't run into that potential of being overworked. I don't want to put a term in your mouth. That's what I kind of heard. That's one alternative.
This campus is got several parks coming up.
I don't know how we determine this, but we have a committee they meet. But what do they do? I mean, what have they actually done? I'd like to know, and I don't know how we do that, but if they're active and they really do things, that's one thing versus somebody who has a ceremony meeting and talks five minutes, ten minutes, and leaves.
Yeah. Well, I would never diminish the acts of volunteers that serve our city, right? So, let's put that out there. All of them serve in a volunteer capacity with no compensation. So we thank each and every one of them for their service, whether for one month or a hundred and one months. However, I will let you know that, you know, the mayor alluded to earlier, the alternative tree, the alternative compliance measure since two thousand and twenty-two has never been enacted. They've never had to perform those duties, not to say that they won't, and they're there and they have the authority, and they may in time in the future. But these groups typically meet on an as-needed basis for projects. When we're going to consider redeveloping a park, we will consult with, or the staff liaison will consult with the Parks Commission to get volunteer input on your behalf. Do you like the splash pad here as an example versus here? The tree commission does a lot of, like the mayor, as you know, over his thirty-year tenure has gone out and planted trees at various elementary schools and schools around the community. They're very much a part of that effort. So it's on an ad needed more. There, I would, in the scale of busyness, they're less busy than the planning commission and the Downtown Development Authority and Border Zoning Appeals, but they may be a little bit more busy than, let's say, the Christmas Commission who meets probably for once or twice a year to plan out Christmas decoration programming, if that's helpful.
Yeah, but, but it's as needed, and they're there when you need them. We've got the bicentennial park coming up. I'd love to have our Parks Commission be involved in that process somehow so that we've got a filter between us and staff and, and what the commission wants to see. I mean, I think that's important, that they have a standpoint.
Isn't that kind of the role of the bicentennial, what we're just nominating for, the fourteen? Wouldn't that be?
Well, in my opinion.
Now you got, now you got how many? Twenty-one?
Well, in my opinion on that, they're planning far more than input on, is there programs?
I know, but you certainly could include, that could be included in their, in their process, and they're part of their responsibility, right?
It could. It could.
It wouldn't be a stretch to do that.
I, I think that the level of, because I don't know how much training is involved with the Parks Commission. I know there's some with the trees. But I would think that you would want a group that's going to really look at the park as a separate thing and have the bicentennial committee weighing in on the history that's going to be told there. Because there will be two different distinct amounts of work that need to be done in regards to.
Yeah.
But we can talk about.
That's actually the way the ordinance, Mr. Sears drafted for the bicentennial committee, actually reflects what they're charging for programming and the events.
That's it?
That's the way that we were received, not the park.
Right. And we got, in the SPOSS, we got pickleball edition coming up. So what does that look like? Where, you know, what are we doing there? So.
Now, and add the additions of the week and that kind of thing, and talk about those pieces of the park.
That's right.
So there's a lot.
We need a park.
So, since we're talking about people rolling off as one of your proposals, then it might be good to have the information as to the, what time is left on the appointees. That might be helpful if we're gonna have a discussion around that, right?
We can certainly share.
The members and the dates, both committees, when they roll off.
For parks and tree.
Right. Is everyone okay with the work session idea in addition to the traffic?
Sure.
Adding those two items? Okay. So, go ahead.
Good.
Don't need a motion there, but if we're okay with that?
No.
All right. Anyone else on this?
And if I may, guidance on the Cultural Arts Commission? We've talked a lot about parks and tree. I think I have that forward.
Let's take some time and discuss that in the work session. Is that?
Yeah, that's it. The pleasure of the council. That's what you want.
Well, I have, I think I have a solution, but I'm not gonna voice it here right now, but, well, my opinion anyway, but.
You have the time?
I'll, I'll, I'll wait for the discussion, but I think where he's at, what specific type of direction would you need related to the cultural arts to help you or help us, any?
I don't know. I mean, I could share the names and the terms that exist now. I mean, and then we'll just, I guess, meet in May.
Yeah, I think it'd be important too with, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Since there was a conversation in a letter and things that took place with that, I think it'd be important to me personally to have those that are, I think you do keep attendance, and those that are attendance, and those that, you know, kind of like, don't show, put in, put in the time or whatever, because I think that might be, help us in making a decision as to how do we scrap it and roll, roll over? Or just start all over with similar nominees? You know, that might, that might be helpful. I don't, your thoughts?
I'll bring as much information as I can find according to attendance and, you know, frequency of meeting, activities, everything that I can collate together and help you make decisions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Including their projects that they self-perform and that they partner with. I'd like to see that comprehensive list.
That Cultural Arts Committee was, back history on it, they would, did a lot of work on the Wadsworth Auditorium
Right.
stuff, and now the staff is doing that, so.
Correct, yeah. I recall the history, and I've had conversations with Haskell and Cletus and the mayor, et cetera, but that was then, and I guess we're moving into this is now.
Things change.
I mean, just so that you know, they do a lot of things. I go to a lot of their programs.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, I'm the only council member there. So I need y'all to just also look at what they're doing, because there are very good programs that they put on.
No, it's, it's not minimizing. Please don't misunderstand me. I'm minimizing the effectiveness of it and their, and their service. It is, do you need fourteen versus seven, and do we, since we have more of a liaison, a higher, frankly, who picks up the slack and based upon your recommendation, staff's recommendation, fourteen is, doesn't need to be, but the Cultural Arts Commission needs to be there, but doesn't just need seven.
Yes, sir.
And can operate effectively.
We see them as content curators, you know, to come in and say, these are the bands, the performers, the performing artists, the cultural arts that they would like to come. And now with the creation of leisure services and additional staff, that the staff can manage the contracting, the setting up, the sound, the audio, video, all that. We just need them to help curate content. They pick who they like to see perform, and we execute.
Yeah, I understand that. I just want to make sure that our conversation is not misconstrued by the public as finding less value in them because they are.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, we're gonna move on now to unfinished business. The first item is Twenty-One Berry Avenue. This is an owner update and request for extension. Mr. Murray, how are you?
Doing well, Mr. Mayor and Council. This property was last, before you, back in January, they were granted a ninety-day extension. The owner, Mr. Calderon, did want me to express his apologies, or he was, had a work conflict today and was unable to attend. But the good news is, there's been a lot of work done. All the interior roughs have been completed, and the inspection was passed. I talked to the inspector this morning, and they did pass all their rough inspections. They've, they've installed windows, started work, doing some repair of the exterior siding. So basically, all that's left is to start the interior finishes, the drywall, the insulation, and then finish out the exterior. So he's asking for another ninety days. There's, there's a lot been done, but there's still a good bit left to do, and he's asking for another ninety days extension on the project.
Is there a motion?
No, I got a question.
A question?
Yeah. You said, do you say they finished or started finishing the exterior?
But he's just got, just sections.
I mean, I think part's I've done, but part's I've not. I mean.
Yeah, he, there was some.
This has been there a long time, and their neighbors have to look at that every day.
Yeah, it has, it has, but there's, like I said, the good news is there's been more work done the last ninety days than there's probably been the last year on that. So that he's making, I think he's finally getting serious about seeing this through to the finish line. So there's, the front section is, is, yeah, I believe you, I wish it had gone faster, but it, but it, but it is making progress.
I mean, to me, I mean, the interior is great that he's doing it. Like I said, if the exterior is complete and kept clean, then nobody sees it and it's out of, it's fine.
Right.
That's what I'd like for, is finish the outside. Didn't go work on the inside where you don't have to.
Right, right. Well, there was just certain sections, the front, and then a couple of sections on the side that had to, had to have some repair done of these, the, the exterior, but the, the windows were boarded up. So he's got brand-new windows in it. So, I mean, there, there's improvements there. There's improvements there, so.
So in my opinion, if we're gonna extend ninety days, which I'm good with that, that we keep in play the forty-five-day update.
Mr. Mayor? Yes? Any other questions? Just, there've been a number, I mean, I'm new to all this, but just looking at this, when we did the ninety-day extension back in January, was that an extension just to do part of the work or do all of the work? What was our understanding at that point?
It's supposed to be a schedule to complete.
It's supposed to be a schedule to complete, but.
And if I look back, you probably know, how many of these ninety, one-hundred-and-twenty-day extensions have we issued since we started?
Well, this goes back to two thousand and twenty, so.
Correct. And each time we issued one of those, it was to complete and not just to move forward. So the report that I got in January was, he moved forward, so let's give him another extension. So where I'm just concerned, concerned is, what's, Mr. Sears, what is, what, what happens if we give another extension and he doesn't make it? What's the next step for the city? Mr. Sears?
Well, part of the problem that council has already run into is the property technically is no longer unsafe.
Okay.
All right, based upon fifty percent complete to complete. All right, so you can't order him to demolish it. So the option for council is not to grant the extension, go in, finish the work for him, and then file a lien against the property. All right. The second thing that we'd have done in the past is been to file a petition, put him into court because he has failed to complete the work under the order of the council. What happens is that puts it from council to the court. The only difference is the court can fine him up to five hundred dollars for not completing. And if we'd have taken the position, they can fine him five hundred dollars a day. All right, but if he's limited on funds, that creates an issue. So technically, or from a practical standpoint, what happens, what somebody reaches this point is the court's gonna give him ninety days, because that's what he's gonna pass for. Now, the court may fine him at the end of the ninety-day period and may put, like I say, a hundred dollars a day or something on him if he doesn't complete, because he will be closed in contempt. So those are the options, you know, if, if, when you get to a point like this, it's no longer technically unsafe.
All right, since he's not here, how do we convey that to him, that that's what may happen the next time it comes up? If it's not finished?
Yeah, Mr. Calderon.
Mr. Calderon is well aware.
He's very well aware of that.
Okay.
Yes, he, Mr. Murray, it's head, Mr. Calderon in court, only a number of them.
Okay.
Well, that's encouraging.
Oh, a question, but, you know, my, my goal, like everybody's goal, is to have, have this house finished and rented out and serving the city.
I think that's his goal, too.
We all want that goal. So, but I feel like we've been taken advantage of over, I'm just like, I'm, I'm the new guy. When I look at this, I feel like we've been taken advantage of. Our niceness has been taken advantage of. So, I don't, y'all are the, y'all, y'all are the experience, but I'd like to have a wording in this next extension that had some, some end to it, either way, like if it's not done, the city will finish the work and bill back, bill you back? Or, I don't know if we can do that or not, but.
That's what I was saying, is he needs to be aware, that's what is probably gonna happen for me the next time that comes up.
And, and Mr. Murray, sure, I would take up with Calderon. But over the past ten years, if he's been in town doing things, it has been like pulling teeth to get him to finish things. But he has, we have a number of structures in the city over the course of that ten-year period. So it's just, it, you know, we've talked about this before, and you've got to urge him. So it's just, it it, you know, we've talked about this before and you've got the urgent uh renewal project that right now you're putting money there into new construction. Uh, you know, you could take some of that money that you put into there to assist people like this in doing these kind of things under some financing scheme. But we have not addressed or got to that point yet, other than what Tracy is doing through her NSP funds and some of her, what do you call it, JIP funds.
Yeah.
Some of those programs, so in other words, there's a, there's a five bits going on in rehabbing uh structures within the city. Um, and and of course, it's going to be all those old financial funds and things like that. So, but that is in the ordinance. Now, if you extend it ninety days, then we will not proceed to take it to court. Uh, to put, that's part of the process in play. So that's up to council.
So so what he?
Even though he's he he's asking for ninety days, there's no reason we have to give him ninety days. We can give him thirty days. And then at the end, at the end of that thirty day period, we can see whether or not we want to say just go to court.
That's a better plan for me, huh? That's thirty days is great. See where he is.
I mean.
So he has a track record over ten years, basically upon this this math, he's done in ten years, two and a half houses. I mean, if you do the math, it's, you know, so it's a, and it it's been a difficult, but I agree with what with what the mayor just said. I like the thirty days and kind of sends a message to me.
That's where he stands.
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody make a motion for thirty days?
I'll make that motion for thirty days.
Second. I have a motion, second. You have a question?
Okay, so I have a question. Um, I know we're frustrated with him, think he's taking advantage and all that, I get all that. But I guess what I'm asking is we either give him a reasonable amount of time to actually do the work or you just go ahead and take him to court now. Because giving him thirty days to do what is more than thirty days worth of work, in my opinion.
It's a good point.
Is not.
He's not going to have this done in thirty days, I can tell you that.
But he's also went from ninety days, ninety days, ninety days, one eighty days, as to to uh councilman at at one eighty and one eighty, one twenty, ninety. So it's not like he hasn't had the adequate time.
For to actually get on it.
My point, yeah, that's that's right. And my my point for the thirty days was to say to him, there's some urgency here.
And that's the last time, it's just an automatic.
That's right. This is, and and tell him that. If it's thirty days and then if it, if you're not done, you're going to court. Or appreciable work over the next thirty days that shows us that it doesn't look like it does today, thirty days from now. That he's done thirty days worth of work. And in my, and then in my mind, another thirty days worth of work and then another thirty days worth of work and he's done. Instead of just saying to him, you've got free rein for ninety days to do nothing. And then we're going to take you to.
Well, I, and no, I understand. Uh, now, he's done a lot of, maybe I didn't clearly um communicate that, but he's done a lot of, he hasn't done nothing the last ninety days. He's done a lot of work, like like I said, probably more work than the last ninety days he's done the prior year. So I do think he's getting the message. I do think he's getting serious about it. Um, there's still work to be done, but there has been a lot done in the ninety days.
What inspections does he have left to do?
Uh, the uh, the uh, the interior finishes, the uh, uh, the windows and the exterior siding, that's that's really about it. The the rough, the rough inspections were the big ones.
Right, and then he'll have this final electrical.
And then it's final, yeah.
E and all that.
Right.
And um, do you all expect inspect the um exterior siding and that kind of stuff to make sure that they have put?
Yes.
So when it, which one's coming up next or which two?
Uh, you might could, Brian could probably speak more clearly to that. What comes after the rough inspection?
Good afternoon. Uh, based on these photographs, his next inspection would probably be what we call an energy inspection. That's after he's installed all of his insulation, his uh energy saving devices. After that, the next will be a thirty day where we actually turn power on to the home. So it would basically be eighty five percent complete at that point and then the final inspection.
Okay, so in your estimation, should he be able to get past that next couple of inspections prior to that final inspection in thirty days?
In thirty days?
Mm-hmm.
If he would work every day, all day long, he should be able to do that, but now, um, I I don't know what his work habits are if he's trying to do it himself.
Okay, and and that's what I was trying to get to.
I understand. I I do understand your point.
So I guess I want to give him a mile marker. I want to give him a mile marker, say, you got to have this.
Thirty days.
I mean, if we're going to micromanage him, let's give him some real goals to meet.
Well, to make a, I don't know the word, I don't know what significant means, but signif- significant progress is what I say, thirty days.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
Someone said if we had the exterior complete, we would be okay, then he can move to the interior. If we set that deadline, have the exterior complete in thirty days?
That's a good goal, because that that fixes the exterior look that people have to see. Is that all right with y'all? Exterior finish and then some work inside of significance?
That's, yeah, I would feel much better in thirty days if the picture looked like it's finished on the outside.
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Well, I've got a motion.
All right, second.
We've got a motion and a second for a thirty day extension. And you can convey to the owner what we're expecting in thirty days. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a second and final reading, uh, rezoning request, RZ twenty twenty four oh one, eight point four four acres located off New Crossing Boulevard or bypass in Ashley Park. Tax parcel oh eight seven five zero four three zero zero four, changing conditions. This is a second and final reading. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
So a motion to second, we approve on the second final reading.
I know one thing, they're going to town after. Every time I ride by there, there's more work done.
Sure are.
Give him thirty days.
I do have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign, motion carried. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Craver, you're up with the consideration of the twenty twenty four roadway paving program.
Yes, sir. At the sake of rehashing last meeting's conversation, um, what we have here and and staff's recommendation is to add Kate's and Crit's Alley to the twenty twenty four roadway program. And then postpone those roadways called out in your packet, um, referred to commonly as those uh roadways in the Summer Grove community as well as Diplomat Parkway. Please note my use of terms postpone it because they will go to the pre, the next pro, next year's program. This is all predicated upon numbers we received, estimated numbers we received for the cost of the prior agreed to year two program coming. Um, roughly one point five five million dollars over budget.
I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
The the list that I'm looking at of the short streets that are, of course, more than what you want to add to this one.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this a comprehensive list of the short streets that need to be paved?
Uh, this is a comprehensive list of those that we could find. I mean, there may be pieces out there, in all honesty, that we may or may not have found. But this is our, a pretty good list through our GIS department and folks in Public Works and Engineering looking through as well as myself going out.
Because I, um, on our Facebook feed, there was a woman that asked about her street and I don't see it on here, so I wanted to make sure we captured that in some way.
Yeah, I can, I can ask Communications to get me the name of that roadway and add it. I mean, all of our roadways, the public roadways are listed somewhere.
It's Welch Street.
Welch, okay.
And then she emailed me later.
So, Mayor, that's the, Council, that's the recommendation from staff, hasn't changed from.
Um, I'll make that motion, but we we do that. I know that we would want to wait until Mr. Gion had a chance to look at the list. Um, but as far as I'm concerned, I'll make a motion to go with staff's recommendation.
Second.
So a motion to second that we, the recommendation is in your agenda and the motion is to go to uh the council approved staff recommendation with regard to this issue. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you. Uh, the next under visitors, this is a request from Summer Grove POA, uh, banners and signs at the entrances of the neighborhood for several upcoming events. Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second, we approve the request. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. The next is a request from Corner Arch Gallery, to close the North Court Square and South Court Square for Labor Day Festival on Monday, September the second from eight AM to five PM. Hey, Ms. Jones, how are you today?
Good, how are y'all?
Any questions with Ms. Jones? Is there a motion?
Motion, so moved, second.
Motion to second, we approve your request. Is there?
I mean, Mr. Um, Crasco Craver fits something.
Yeah, okay. If I may, yeah, um, Ms. Jones, you would also ask for use of parking spaces on the interior portion of the square. Is that correct? I don't think that's clearly explained here. This is the road closure. I just want to make sure that.
Well, we want to do like the footprint of Market Day, have um south and north blocked off with police. Uh, we want to get a police protection, but um we were wanting to put um food trucks across from Leaf and Bean on the west side, have those blocked off. And uh, just on that side, I think that's the west side.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to, I'm sorry to interrupt, just wanted to make sure that was clear because it's not written in here, but we had follow up communication. And so the request from the applicant is to use those.
It is in the application.
To use those interior portions um for the food trucks, but not the roadway, it's just those interior parking spaces.
Yeah, just the parking spaces on the west side of, on the courts courthouse side.
Right, the same way you've done it for years.
Yeah, yeah, same way. Yeah.
It's on here. Okay, so I had, did have a motion to second to approve this and it it is the same process we've had for several years. Appreciate you heading this up. Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. That ends our regular agenda. I don't have any other items off agenda that today. Uh, and is there a motion that we adjourn unless we need executive session? No, we don't. Good, because the room back in the back's full.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second, we adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we adjourn.